Josh, we're not going to have hard copies of all the resumes and letters of interest. If we want to read those, we should take these on laptops, or are there copies?
I've got copies of resumes.
Okay.
Just one copy.
Called a meeting to order. If everybody could please stand for the pledge at the moment. Silent reflection, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, we have roll call, please.
President Peters?
Here.
Ms. Traynor? Councilman Eads?
Here.
Councilman Hayes?
Present.
Councilman Hitt?
Here.
Councilman McDaniel's?
Here.
Councilman Stahl?
Present.
Okay, just want to let everybody know, tonight right off the bat, we're going to be going into executive session. We're going to interview candidates for Ward Three vacancy. We'll bring in each candidate separately during that time for the interviews. Like I said, we have six candidates. Clarissa Ramey, Janine Fraser, Amber Wymer, Kimmerly, Ikito, Arlie Drake, and Lisa Jack. So at this time, if I can get a motion to exit regular meeting and enter into executive session for personnel reasons, for the purpose of appointment to City Council Board.
I make the motion.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor? Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
We'll go in here and then I'll call out the first executive candidate. About a minute.
...
You know, it's what's good that I bring everything up, which Jennifer Green, she's... I'd say, I really like... I think... Okay. I hear about you back here. I see about decent areas. Only because... Because he went on Ryan King. Not, not because you're being real careful, but I worked at one. Ryan King, so I'm stuck. Everybody in the region, we hit it now, we all, or everybody in the country, as counsel. So we heard the next term, so that's why. So...
I would give up some money.
Oh, your side?
Yeah.
Oh, I need a ride. I need like, because obviously I was like, I take these one products that really helps like, they have like cortisol levels, like help me like, just feel better. So I've been taking it like, six months now, and I like sort of like, oh, you know, they have a mission to back for something. Hot influence or, that's another, that's like, Pyramides, whatever, I guess. But they are products that I really do use, so I'm like, oh, I can do that.
Have you lost weight?
I've lost, um, yeah, I've also...
Good for you. Do you feel better?
I do, yeah. It's definitely nice, all my clothes are...
That's your thing.
That's the only hit place for. If that. Why? Between Steve and I, we have like, $700 in taxes, and federal, state taxes, he's like, has a future in that night, and then I have like, my husband, my catering.
Understand money.
I want a new vehicle, but I'm like, oh.
I promise that's how I'm like, telling you already.
He's working.
Amber Wymer?
I mean, obviously, I'm...
Oh, yeah, right. How about, uh, Kimberly? Thank you.
Hello. Nice to meet you. We try to work out.
Usually do like, in some way, before the meeting. Which, they... Yeah. Oh, that's what I do. So that's what I try to do, and see if I can get my service to work. I can put the zoom in here. I hear you're in London High School playing with the dead guy. What? Pete told me sorry, he knows the secret. I went to a lot. I was talking last night. I went to the dress. It was so funny. It was really good. I never seen nine to five in general. So it was. You haven't seen the movie? No. And it was funny. It was funny. I really, it was one of my favorite ones, women's style.
Do you need the paperwork that's in here?
No.
Mr. Mayor, before this vote happens, I will tell you, I think you need everybody's name and phone number because I think there's five people that will serve well on some of your commissions. I know you're always looking for somebody.
All right, did I get a motion to exit executive session and back into regular meeting?
Motion to...
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stoll?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, if everybody would write down who they would like to appoint.
Pass it down?
Just to let everybody know, Shannon's not here tonight, but we gave her the opportunity to put a vote in based on resumes and interest letters. If there is a tie, I'll be the tiebreaker. So we have Lisa Jackman, Clarissa Ramey, Clarissa Ramey, Lisa Jackman, Lisa Jackman, and then another Lisa Jackman. So we have four for Lisa Jackman and two for Clarissa. So we will appoint Lisa Jackman for Ward Three. So Lisa, if you want to sit in on the meeting, then after the meeting, we'll swear you in. That way during the meeting, if you have any questions during legislation, I know you don't, won't have anything in front of you, but if something comes up, you have a question, be there.
Can I say something? Councilman Eads was correct. We do have a lot of boards and commissions that I have to fill every year, so feel free to reach out to me if you're still interested in doing something with the city. I can tell you, the last time Ward Three vacated, it was not...
I was going to make a comment.
It was not an easy, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It wasn't an easy thing to fill, and it actually stayed vacated. So to have six people show interest and five people show up out of Ward Three, which is the smallest ward we have, I think is a testament to the City Council that people are excited about what's going on in London and want to work with the City Council. So please reach out to me, shoot me an email, shoot me a text. I'll jot your name down on our commissions, boards, and stuff, and I have to appoint different boards and different things at the January of every year, so please reach out to me. Thank you.
Yeah, with the five candidates that were here tonight, I mean, I think that's even more than at-large gets it for the election. I think that's great for the city. Also note, I encourage, keep, go for, you know, the election, pull your petition. It's nice, it's nice for the city. So, all right, with that being said, we can move on. Yeah. Okay.
Minutes.
Onto the minutes. Did everybody take a look at February 20th minutes? Any questions or concerns? Corrections? Hearing nine, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Public hearings, there are no public hearings, communications and announcements. July 3rd this year is on Thursday. Normally in the past, if July 4th or 3rd falls on Thursday, we normally just cancel the meeting, the first meeting in July. So that's what I propose now, just to cancel the July 3rd meeting, we'll just have one meeting in July.
Sounds good.
So I guess we need to, we can just do a voice vote on that. All in favor, cancel the July 3rd meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, so there will be no July 3rd meeting, so if you want a scheduled vacation at that time, so be it, but I expect everybody to be here July 3rd for the London fireworks. Audience concerns? We'll start with that, and we'll go with Anita Lykins. If you could still state your name and address for the record, please.
Anita Lykins, 157 East First Street. Thank you for your time. I am here to discuss an issue that impacts me as well as the residents of London, an issue which is within the purview and the mission as stated of the London City Council. I have provided a packet containing supporting documents that I'll be discussing and a transcript of this presentation I'll give to you afterwards. I will answer any questions at the end of my presentation. This is all about me. On Friday, February 21st, 2025, I was the victim of a car accident on Laurel Street between High and Washington. I was not at fault. A 17-year-old driver was cited. He had driven his car out of a side alley, not stopping, striking my 2016 Acadia. Police report is on file, it's in your folder, 1-25-000270. We were both going around 15 miles per hour, no one was injured. I advised the young driver not to move his car. His car had bounced back and was blocking the alley. My car was in the right lane of Laurel and was not blocking the left lane. I didn't move from the accident site, waiting for the police to arrive. My car continued to run, and I stayed in my car to keep warm. My right front fender, headlight, grille, and fender were crushed, and the fender pressed against the tire. My car was drivable, however, once the fender was pulled away. Airbags did not go off in either vehicle. I called the police, I called my husband, Gary, and then my insurance agent. My driving record is pristine, and I thought that I knew what was what. It was an unfortunate accident, but I was calm. However, I was not prepared for what happened from then on. Hence the summary. Number one, London Police Officer John Gubow promptly arrived. He informed me that he had called a towing company. Subsequently, another officer showed up, picked up a few pieces of plastic in the traffic lane, and promptly left. There were no oils or fluids leaking from my Acadia. My husband arrived, asked Officer Gubow if we could just drive our car home to our home. It was a street over, or alternately, if it had to be towed, could we have it towed by Flynn Towing, since they were the only block away from our home? Officer Gubow said that the city rotated the towing company that was on call, and we had to use who was on rotation. We had no choice on the towing company. That was impact number one. Impact number two, Damian's Towing and Recovery LLC showed up with two flatbeds for the two cars. After talking with my insurance agent, I asked Damian to take my car to Coglins on Lafayette instead of V's Auto Lot at 251 Olive Street here in town. Damian said he was working for V, but he had no choice but to take it to V's lot. Damian stated that he was just the driver who V had contacted for the accident pickup since V's trucks were down. I spoke again to Officer Gubow and told him that I didn't want my car taken to V's lot. My insurance agent had okayed it being towed to Coglins since we were considering having my car repaired. Officer Gubow directed Damian to call V, and then the officer spoke to someone. Officer Gubow said he was unable to convince V to haul our car anywhere else, but only to V's lot. Impact number two, not only did we not have a choice on our towing company, we didn't have a choice on our towing destination. Impact number three, Damian saw that I wasn't pleased. He told me he'd take my car to Coglins for $250 cash, but I would not get a receipt. I had access to the cash, but I told him that was not acceptable. I contacted my insurance agent again, and I informed him that if it had, it had to go to V's lot, not Coglins, based on Officer Gubow's direction. Damian loaded up my car, he transported it to V's, which was less than two miles away. Impact number three, we were subjected to very questionable business practices when you start talking about cash under the table. Impact number four, the following Monday, which was over the weekend, Gary and I went to V's and collected our personal belongings from my car. A man came out of the office and identified himself as V. He told us he was not in charge, that he knew nothing about the towing of our car, he knew where it was at, he said he owned the land but had sold the business to Damian. Impact number four, we were growing very suspicious of who ran the business based on conflicting stories from Damian and from V. Impact number five, the next day Tuesday, the insurance adjuster went to V's lot and totaled my car. We asked the insurance loss claims representative if we could buy our car back at salvage value. They said yeah. We asked to have it evaluated by a collision shop. The insurance company approved for us to move it to Buckeye Collision to get an estimate on repairing it prior to settlement. On Wednesday, February 26th, the next day, we met with the representatives at Buckeye's Collision. Buckeye called Damian's Towing, was given a verbal, then a written copy of the bill. Damian told Buckeye that the bill of $5,052.50 had to be paid before we could get my car released so it could be moved to Buckeye. Now, remember, the accident happened on the 21st, and this is on the 25th. We called our insurance company. Damian had transported my car basically from Laurel Street to V's Auto at 251, a distance of less than two miles. The inflated bill included $450 charge for the transport. It also included a recovery charge, a It also included a recovery charge of $1,750, two trucks for $200, oil cleanup of $200, a 9/11 call-out fee of $450, and use of miscellaneous tools of $350. Please see invoice number one in your packet. Three days later, on Friday, February 28th, our insurance company contacted Damian to discuss this invoice. They were able to get him to remove the recovery charge and the truck charges of $200 for the two trucks. But we could not get our car out of lot unless the insurance paid his adjusted invoice of $3,595.88. Please see the invoice number two in your packet. A check had to arrive. My insurance company sent Damian the check for $3,595.88 to 182 Mound Street, London, Ohio. Please look at the top of your invoice, you'll notice that's the stated address. Public records, however, show that that property is under the name of a Beverly Johnson since 1996. This is public information out of the auditor's website. Damian denied receiving the check, once it was proven that it had been delivered and slipped under the mat. He had the insurance company resend a second check to 251 Olive Street, aka V's Auto Lot. Looking up BB&amp;B, the Better Business Bureau, Damian's Towing and Recovery business is 4680 Glade Run Road, London, Ohio. Impact number five. We were subjected to conflicting information on the actual business address for Damian's towing operations. Number six. Finally, on Tuesday, March 4th, Damian notified the insurance company that our Acadia could be removed from V's lot. We promptly contacted Flynn's Towing, who met us at the lot. We drove the Acadia out of the fenced lots through the gate, and it was loaded on his, on his, on his flatbed. I'm telling you, my truck was drivable, or my car was drivable. It was transported to Buckeye Ford, mileage 5.5 miles. We personally paid Flynn's towing transport bill for $109.57. This was three miles more than my car had got transferred for $3,500. See the packet invoice number three. For further comparison of the significant overbilling by Damian's towing, I have included another towing invoice. See packet invoice number four. This also is from Flynn. It's an actual invoice for resident A Smith, who had a totaled car from Flynn Towing with an accident in Hilliard, Ohio, on February 15th, 2025, just one week before all mine accident occurred. This invoice totaled $470.60 for Flynn Towing to respond to a collision in Hilliard, to drive the tow vehicle to and from London, and to pick up and transport the Smith's totaled car from Hilliard Rome Road to Jermaine Honda Dublin, a distance of 14-plus miles. Impact number six. We were subjected to significant and questionable charges on Damian's towing invoice, as you can tell. Summary. I would not have known what Damian's Towing was charging my insurance company had I not salvaged my car. I wouldn't have seen that invoice. While I didn't have to pay it out of pocket, it still impacts me financially. It impacts you. It impacts you. It impacts all the residents of London. In the end, we all pay for Damian's overbilling. Ohio-based insurance rates are set. I contacted the Ohio Division of Insurance. Across the board from accident costs. Your individual premium is then adjusted to reflect your driving record. This overcharging impacts all of us, determining the base rate, whatever insurance company you use, whatever your driving record. This impacts the rates we all pay in our zip code 43140. Finally. I believe that oversight and controls based on, well, actually, it's revised code 49-21-25 out of the Ohio Supreme Court decision from January 21 of 2014, which I'm sure the Law Department can look up, that they need to be developed and put in place by the City of London, because it is the municipalities' rights to do that. We need to have the, eliminate any bad actors from taking advantage of people in the City of London. Here's a few points. Does London mandate that accident victims must use whatever towing company is in rotation? Do you mandate it? If you do, you're kind of responsible for what they do. Residents should be able to choose good operators. What is the city's responsibility if they force residents to use towing companies that are automatic, or ultimately bad actors? What are the mandated exceptions? How are they communicated? How are they applied? I don't know. These are things that need to be asked. If London is the controlling entity mandating the use of certain towing companies for the citizens of London, who is responsible for that administration? And the due diligence of the agents acting for and by the City of London? Number three. What is the city's administration process for the selection and eligibility requirements for the towing contractors included in this mandatory rotation schedule? And number four. How does the City of London conduct a reasonable review process to assess for the business practices, the ongoing reasonableness and validity of towing company contractor charges, both for the amounts and the ethical performance of the work justifying said charges? I can tell you. We didn't have any oil cleanup with my car. Why would they charge for that? Tools for $350? What were they doing? And for tracking consumer concerns and complaints, including a billing practice and charges to the individuals' insurance companies. I know I've run over my time. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for taking a look at these things, because again, I believe that my insurance company paid for it. I'm not out of pocket. But this impacts what's happening with us, and we as a municipality have a right and an obligation to protect from bad actors, whatever the case is. So thank you again for your time.
Anita, this, yeah, to me, this is criminal. And for the police, I don't, why would the police department? What's the protocol?
I'll let Glenn come up and speak, but I'll tell you, the insurance company reached out to me, and we immediately started diving into this.
Because I would think if I was in an accident, not hurt, that, I know, I'll let, I would figure that if I was in an accident, my car needed towed, all right, police officer would ask me, do you have somebody that can do this? And give that, you know, that citizen that right to find the tow truck? If that, if I couldn't find a tow truck, then police would be like, all right, here's who we can use. But to have somebody do this to a citizen is criminal.
Right, and when this was brought to my attention, Mr. Peters, I'm checking into it, that officer's been off since I heard about it this week, to ask him specifically on that. And I haven't had time to pull up any body camera if it was on there. But that is against our policy. Our policy is to ask the person, if it's reasonable, who do you want to tow? Now, if they want somebody, if the street's blocked and they want somebody from Hilliard or somewhere that's going to be ours or something, it may not apply, we'll work with them. But generally, even when we arrest somebody, if it's certain, hey, I know this guy, he'll tow for me. We, we, we use their, they get preference first. That's in our policy. That's our standard operating procedure. I don't know why it didn't happen this way this time. And then, when I found out and I was notified of this incident in the bill, that's just outrageous. That's unacceptable. We agree. And I've met with the City Law Director. We are working up a contract. We checked around. What limited ability we have with some control with the revised code on certain things. So what we're going to do is enter a contract. I've not seen this before with this tow company. And, and it was just a shock to see that. I was, I couldn't believe it.
I'm sure you're dumbfounded.
Yeah, so it wasn't like we condone this activity or anything. And we're going to end up, we create a contract, we're going to have all the tow companies that want to work with us, as far as being able to be called out, submit a fee structure that should be similar and competitive with other communities. And when I checked with other communities, there's nobody, I, I didn't find anything as outrageous as that. Even towing semis shouldn't cost that much for that distance. So we are looking into it. I just wanted you to know. And we'll have a contract. It's going to be in city policy and with our policy. So it doesn't have to be legislation brought before council and delayed any longer. We're going to get this done right away. And we're going to suspend that tow company until we get this contract signed by them and all the others.
I wouldn't give them the opportunity to sign it. I wouldn't include them. I mean, I think they lost out on that opportunity.
And, and we can discuss it more. We, we just come up to a point where, at what point are we overstepping our bounds on, on restricting things? Somebody can still call them, obviously.
Right, somebody was going to call them, but I don't think, you know, that should be a list for the police department to.
Yeah, and that's what it is. Usually it's just the tow companies we utilize. They presently show us the insurance that they're insured. We're going to add some other things to that on the amounts and everything. So we've, we're addressing the situation. I'm sorry it happened to you the way it did. But we'll address it and get it to where it does not happen again. Any other questions on this?
Not a few, but of Anita.
Thank you very much for that. I'd like to stretch this to going. I'll come up and say that, though. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Seems like your insurance company would look into this as possible insurance fraud.
Considering that my car was being held hostage, I think they were trying to take care of their client as best as possible. What they end up doing, how they can go back and force it. But do you realize that that's pretty much what they can do? It allows, it allows. You cannot get your car out until you pay all fees. Okay? That's, that's the way that it works.
So is the insurance looking into it? Do you know, or?
That, that I do not know, and I'm sure perhaps they will, depending upon how City Council works on this. The other thing is, is the Public Utility Commission, which is overseeing, all right, they have the authority to regulate. Okay, are they in business? Do they have the right kind of truck, blah, blah, blah? But they do, the Supreme Court of Ohio pushed the responsibility. They severed the piece of that revised code that specifically related to who oversees administration because of the use of cities. The state doesn't want to get into cities. They want the cities to make things happen. But when you think about it, if I am out here and I've got great insurance, thank you, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate what they did for me so I could get my car out of there, because I had no idea what was going on with it. When you think about it, what about a person who doesn't have it? Their car is worth $6,000. They've towed them, and they put this kind of invoice on them. And instead of the person, and I'm not saying that this is in anybody's mind, or they could do it, but wouldn't it be very convenient? Oh my gosh, your bill is this high. You just sign over your title and we'll forget about it. And then chop up the parts, sell them off, fix up the little bit of damage, sell it off. I went down and got my salvage title today. You know what they told me? As soon as we have it inspected and improve that we have fixed that car, they will give us a clean title. They will give us a clean title. You get a salvage title as soon as you fix it, you get a clean title. How many people have bought a car from somebody who was fixing it on their own? And a wrecked car and gave them a clean title, because all this is hidden and pushed in the background? I'm just saying, with my background and what I've had to work with in looking into defalcation and fraudulent activities, my little flags go up. I am trying to say these things to avoid these flags from coming up, or the citizens of London to be impacted by the bad things that bad operators can do. I am not saying that Damian's and V are bad operators. But when there's suspicion out there and this kind of stuff comes through, it gives us all the opportunity to rethink how the process, how the protocols, how the third-party vendor management, how the oversight is happening for when we use vendors within this town, and give them the opportunity to act as our agents. So again, thank you. Any other questions?
I talked with you earlier today.
Yes.
Ohio Attorney General Dave View, so I would definitely call him and express your concerns on this, and see if there's something they can do there, too.
There's probably something for the state, because if each municipality has to do it, yes. But I would like to see London be that key of, this is how, this happened here, and this is what we did to fix it before I call them. So I am looking forward to see what City Council and the administration does.
I'm with you, Mr. President. I think they proved that they don't even belong on the vendors list, you know?
But, you know, again, we're in a great country, innocent to proven guilty. These are the facts, okay? You have them.
Mr. President, I was going to save my part for roundtable, but we're already in this big discussion, if I may. I did call the administration about this the other day. To their credit, they called Damian's, who said, well, if the insurance company calls, well, we can negotiate this. It doesn't change the fact that they gave him a bill for $5,000 and they were holding the car hostage. Mr. Mayor said he also called a couple other companies who stated that they thought that was too much, but they may still charge $2,000 to $3,000. I believe that's what you said to me, Mr. Mayor, that they indicated they may charge that much. So I did talk to the police chief at length about this also. And then I did send an email that I just forwarded to everyone, to the law director. So it sounds like the law director with the police chief and the administration, they're starting to work on this now. If you listen to what Ms. Lykens said in her presentation, there is a little confusion as to not whether Damian's was in control of the situation when they said they had to go back and talk to V's. However, the piece of paper had Damian's name on it. So I know the police chief said that he's dealt with Damian's and that they did not charge an outrageous amount. And I've dealt with Damian's on something else, and I thought they were very fair. So I don't know what caused this particular situation, but obviously, we need to get this in control, because if, if they do put a big bill like that and somebody has to sign over the title of their car, that's just bad business for everyone. It's bad for the citizens of London. It's bad for guests that come through and are in an accident. They have no control over whether or not a record gets called, because they're not familiar with anyone, and it's just bad all the way around.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Onto our next one. Is Levi going to?
I think.
That's what I thought. Okay. Brittany Hall, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Brittany Hall, 1056 Amherst Boulevard. I actually just wanted to publicly thank our EMS. Last week, I actually had to call 911 for the first time in my life. And I just wanted to like show my gratitude for them. It was for my three-year-old. They were great with him, great with us to like make sure we were calm. They did a great job. With talks of transferring our London dispatch to the county, it is, my understanding that right now, 911, 911 calls are being dispatched through the county right now. And so my concern is that when I did call 911 last week, the call didn't go through. I actually had to hang up and try again. And I think that's really concerning, and I'm just wondering like what effect that will have on like emergency calls if it's like the police dispatch is also being pushed through like the county. Because if someone's in like, doesn't have another option to hang up and call 911 again, that's, we were lucky enough that we didn't have to do that. But I guess I'm just like wondering like what effects that could have on like emergency calls if like police dispatch is also going through.
I wouldn't think, I, I don't know what happened in your situation here, and thank God, everything turned out good. And thank you for the compliments.
Yeah.
We got top-of-the-line guys over there.
Oh, they were fantastic. My gosh, I, I was a mess, and they, they were wonderful, not just with like my toddler, but, you know, just reassuring that we did the right thing. They were, they were fantastic. Oh my gosh, they were great. But having to hang up a 911 call to try again, that's not, I mean, that's very concerning, so.
I, I can't tell you what happened there, but we can try to check into it and see what happened. I know most of the calls are going through. We haven't had any trouble as far as I know. Is that correct, Chief?
So you originally dialed 911 and it didn't go through?
Yeah, it was, it was interesting.
We don't have any control over that. The 911 calls don't go in the London Police Department's house for seven years.
No, I'm just wondering like if we're like, you know, merging them. No, I'm just wondering, like, if we're, like, you know, merging them.
You can check in to see what happened, but the movie dispatch to the county would not affect 911 calls. It doesn't change anything. It's just our business calls.
Okay.
I'm just curious, did it not ring, or did it ring and no one answered, or?
Nothing. It did nothing.
I don't know if that would be carrier or?
Oh, it wasn't carrier confirmed with Verizon. There's no, like, cell towers down to, like, make sure that the call wasn't going through.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it didn't ring at all. I don't know.
Yeah.
What day? Eighteen seconds.
It was Wednesday evening, whatever date that was, around 10:30, 11:00.
PM?
It's the 25th.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto committee reports. Greg?
Finance committee had met previously. We have nothing new. We did move our meeting to be, because, let me get that date. I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for that. We moved our meeting to follow the other two meetings next month. There was a conflict, so we just felt that it was best to move it to April 21st, I believe. Nope, 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 nope. Oh, March 11th. You're right. I'm sorry, I'm looking a different month. I'm confused. Finance meeting, yeah, March 11th. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. So, that's all I have. We have some items coming up tonight for the first time that came from that meeting that we'll discuss later.
Thank you, Brent.
Public service on the 11th at 5:00 and public safety at 6:00. Next door here.
Thank you, Rich.
Public safety on the 11th, 6:00 PM, next door. Thank you.
Andy?
Nothing additional.
I have nothing either.
Okay, onto city official reports.
I, it's only gonna take about 40 to 45 minutes.
All right.
So, I know it's 8 o'clock. Just thanks, everyone, for coming out once again. Congratulations to Lisa, and thank you for everyone else who applied to be on city council. I did have the opportunity to meet with the members of One Columbus and a leadership team from a new business that'll be located at 475 East High Street. That's formerly the Honeywell Building, which housed the Intelligrated plant. When we heard Honeywell Intelligrated was closing, we immediately started to look for someone to come in and call that vacated building their home. We started to work with the county economic developer, David Kell, and then One Columbus joined the conversations. Together, we worked to identify businesses that would be a good fit for the building and for our community. We identified an Italian-based company that seemed to be a great fit for London, and we're excited, and we were excited when they chose our fine city. The community will benefit from them in many aspects. We want to be a great partner for the city, and they will also be occupying a current vacated building, bring in 231 jobs. That will have an annual payroll of $12 million by the year 2030, and this will also grow London's exposure globally, which may help bring in more large businesses to our community. We understand when the previous business left, it affected many people who lost their jobs, but being able to bring in this great company that will offer good jobs and hopefully help those families out. This $42 million facility is a good example of the strong growth in London that we are experiencing. The right type of growth helps the City of London economically, and we are excited to welcome them to our community. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak to some students from London Middle School about some school assignments they had on community projects. They needed to identify issues within the city and come up with a plan to address them. It was a lot of fun being able to talk to them. They were very bright, and actually, we may see a few community projects being completed by these young adults in the near future. Also attended the London Middle School PTO Uker Tournament. It was held here at City Hall. It's a lot of fun. Want to thank all the volunteers who put that on. This weekend is London High School is presenting their musical, Nine to Five. It will be tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday at 7:00 PM. This is a great way to support the local arts, support the school, and enjoy a nice night out. And then, the fun fact is 1,000, which may be going up. This is how many Easter eggs we're gonna have at our adult Easter egg hunt. It's gonna be a night of fun and surprises for our 21 and over adult egg hunt in Cowling Park on Friday, April 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30. It's a unique egg hunt with a grown-up twist. Be able to enjoy delicious foods from some food trucks, and there'll be some music playing. Then, at 7:00, it'll be the egg hunt. That'll be filled with candy, and then tickets redeemable for some prizes that are being donated by local businesses, which includes things like gift cards and different kinds of merchandise. I want to let you guys know I will be unable to attend the next council meeting, so as legislation comes up, please know. Anytime, give me a call if you have any questions for me. Thank you for your time. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Kennedy, I mean, all right. Okay, onto old business. I'm up for a seventh reading. Ordinance 207-24. Can I get a motion to read by title and number?
Mr. President, I'm gonna see if you allow for this, and you may have to bring out your Roberts rules. I know that we have no movement on these things. I can give you a slight update for all three of these. We'll save the clerk all of this reading if we can just, if you'll allow me to table this until the next meeting. It's your call. I don't.
Let's say, yeah, let's, Shannon being gone, let's say, we just keep it on.
Keep it on the table, or do you want the reading?
Keep it on as a reading. So, is there a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 207-24. Ordinance creating 19 incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements that once made will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an incentive district public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for deposit such service payments, authorizing payments to this London City School District and Tolls Career Technical Centers, and improving and authorizing the execution and delivery of tax increment financing agreement of Tomcat LLC.
Speed readers, they have commercials that you'll be happy to get paid to do. Thank you.
Micro machines.
That's it. That was, that was one of them. That's right. So, Mr. President, just to give you a quick update, I did see a short email from the law firm that council has hired. The process of this discussion is still ongoing. They sent what they consider some redline items, just that they're addressing with Tomcat at this point, but there's no movement on this at this point. I did respond, and I did ask for a couple of things, just to let everybody know, that I still think that once this, once we get to that point, I'm asking for Frost Brown and Todd to come over and have a meeting with council, just to let everybody know the whole process that's went on before we make final decisions. So, at this point, I would suggest that we leave this on.
Does anybody have any questions on this one? Okay, onto ordinance 208-24. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 208-24, authorizing the City of London, Ohio to accept title to certain real property located within the city and immediately transfer title back to the current owner for the purpose of implementing tax increment financing pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections 5709.41, dispensing with the requirement that the resolution must be read on three different days pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 731.17A.
So, same, same argument for this, is that these things are still being negotiated at this point. We don't have any further information on this yet.
Onto ordinance 209-24. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved. Second.
Ordinance 209-24, declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of London, Mass County, Ohio to be a public purpose pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections 5709.41. Declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvements is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Sections 5709.41, .42, .43, .832, and 85.
I do have a question, and I'd have to go look at the minutes again. I thought we had taken care of this one.
We passed 210, which was the fourth one. We passed that one.
The fourth one?
The NCA agreement? I didn't think, or is this the NCA? The transfer back and forth we passed.
No, that's this one, and this one didn't pass, I believe. I believe it's the NCA did, the NCA, the NCA part did. This was the transfer back and forth, and this was the neighbor here. They said, you know, this is the first step if you want to let us.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to verify that.
The 210 is the one about the setting the time and place for our hearing of the petition.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you. Again, same thing with this. It's still in negotiation.
Okay, up for a third reading. Ordinance 111-25. Can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 111-25, and ordinance amending section 874 of the codified ordinances.
So, this is legislation that deals with the festivals or events. We discussed it pretty extensively at the last council meeting. I don't know if there's anything else that we wanted to talk about related to this.
I just want to double check. We read 207, 208, 209. Do you want to double check?
Yes.
I read them straight from the legislation. Yes.
I have something about this, if you don't mind.
So, you know, I know there's been a lot of discussion on this, and I appreciate all of it. So, I wrote a little, little statement here. So, I understand that the event layout portion of the proposed legislation has raised concerns and felt restricted in those discussions have been going on. I do believe that it's important to address a couple other significant aspects of the legislation that have been largely overlooked. So, we've been really focused on how the layout is, but this isn't just about the festival stuff, right? This is about sidewalk sales, how many festivals, shutting down 56, things like that. So, you know, if the hangup on this is the layout, and I don't want to speak for the Strawberry Festival, but I think that's the hangup, like everything else in the legislation, is?
Part of it, part of it, is the layout, yes.
What other parts of the legislation is?
The times, the time.
They amended that.
Well, I didn't think it actually amended it yet.
No, they did.
They said that they wanted to wait until the.
Oh, I thought you amended. I apologize. I apologize. I thought you guys amended that.
We talked about it, but we decided.
I thought we amended a portion of something. Okay. So, the layout and the times, and those two things were discussed, you know, but I think passing this legislation so we can have, you know, how many times we're gonna let people, you know, shut the road down? How many times are we gonna let there be sidewalk sales? Things of that nature. I think this legislation is important for that. You know, we discussed also the having city council do a work session to kind of work through the map logistics of it, and then give the administration guidance on how you guys want to proceed forward. So, you know, just listening to everyone talk, I would hate for this legislation to die because of those two things, when you can just amend it to amend the hours and pull out the map at this time, and then we can work on the map. You see what I'm saying? Because there's, there's a lot of other things in there than just the big festival stuff, which has been what has been contentious. And, you know, there's also stuff about street markets, street closures, ADA compliance, nonprofits, things of that nature that I think really need to stay in so, so we have that guidance in place. Does that make sense?
What's, when the organization puts in a application, is part of that the setup? As far as the approval of that application is the setup part of that?
Yeah, and currently, we were going with, you know, what had been put in place when we met with safety service directors, or the safety service director, department heads, and that's what we came up with. And, you know, and I understand the Strawberry Festival doesn't like that layout, and that's why I asked for council to do a work session to figure out a better layout, if they so choose. But that's what I'm saying. If you want to amend the hours and pull out the map, at least we'll have all the stuff in place, because, you know, right now, somebody can just have a sidewalk sale, right? But maybe the businesses don't want a booth selling pizza in front of their shop that sells pizza, or put a tent on a corner when then ADA cannot be complied, right? So, then, at that point, people cannot use the sidewalks. So, you know, having these regulations in place, I think can really help the city.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you saying, is that including festivals? If you're saying you don't want, maybe a business doesn't want a certain vendor in front of their shop, will that?
No, no, I'm talking about sidewalk sales.
Okay.
I'm talking about side, and it's not that. So, on sidewalk sales, you know, here's what happened. I'll just let you know what happened. There was a sidewalk sale. They just did a sidewalk sale. Some businesses was like, you know, I have a salon. I don't want a vendor right in front, because I need to get these senior citizens into my shop to do their hair, and there's a 10 by 10 tent right in front of their shop, right? I just use the pizza thing for an example. There was also issues where they had put them down the road to the corners, and so, so people saying getting their hair done couldn't get their walker or wheelchair onto the sidewalk, because there's a 10 by 10 tent there. So, that's the portion I'm talking about is the sidewalk sales. You know, we just want to be respectful. Somebody wants to have a sidewalk sale, we think it's fantastic. Like, we encourage it, but, you know, ask your neighbor, do you want this thing on the sidewalk right in front of your door? And some of them will say yes, but some of them didn't want it, right? And so, that's, was part of that, and that's all in the legislation. I, I bet you've read it probably a couple times.
So, is that one of the, like, the first Friday thing, where they park food trucks and block alleys? You're talking about not blocking the business, but then you got food trucks out, that Friday thing, where they had the food truck thing downtown, and they block alleys now?
I don't, I don't know what alley, what alley. Were you speaking as an active alley?
Yeah, it was an active alley.
Yeah, I'm not, I'd have to, I didn't see it. I'd have to see it.
Mr. President, I think when we heard Councilman Trainer at the last meeting, she questioned why this needs to be legislated. I can see the need to maybe include part of this, so I think we're either, we either kill the whole thing tonight and let them come back with the revision next time, or we can table it until we have a specific list of things that we're gonna remove from this before we move forward. Because we can say that we're gonna take out the entire section of 874.04, and it has to be renumbered, because we've removed that. But then, the time constraint seems to be 27, or pardon me, 87402 point, or, let's see, letter C, which is just the 72 hours. So, if you want to go redline that part and take those things out, or just kill the whole thing and come back with a fresh copy to eliminate confusion at the next meeting.
So.
Wouldn't it just, wouldn't it be just, just as easy to amend the hours and remove the map? And if there's any other revision, we can bring the legislation in?
You can always amend it again.
Well, 874 deals with not just the map.
So, also, can I just make one more point? I apologize, is that I know they want to get their, they want to get their stuff in soon, right? So, currently, the city policy is how it's laid out, right? It's down the middle. It's 72 hours. It's these things, right? And I know that they need to figure this out and get their vendors. So, you know, an amending of, of making, what, what do we, what do we say the hours? What did we say, 80 or something? 78 or 80? We added six. We added six.
Now it's 72.
And we made it 78, right?
Yeah, you said we're 70 or between there.
Yeah, I think we added six, because you guys said if we did six, then we could do. So, to amend that to 78, and then just pull the map, and then start having some meetings about guidance of how to map this thing, right? And then, we could do a case-by-case basis at that point.
But if we, Mr. Mayor, if we just pulled the map. Mr. Mayor, if we just pull the map, then it leaves in the language that all vendors will be set up in the middle of the street with openings facing the downtown business storefronts. It seems like that was a big point of contention before.
Right. So, okay. So remove the map and remove the language that refers to the map or refers to the layout of festivals.
Drive five. Here four. Here four.
Well, that whole section is 874.02. Or that's... I'm sorry, that's specifications and then 04 is the special event setup.
Setup shall be at least 20 feet to the curb.
There's 87.04 special event setup with street closure. Set the section here.
Sorry, please?
The section says special event setup with street closure. That's where it says vendors shall be pursued to one of the three options. See attached maps. All setup shall remain in the area. That's A.
So basically eliminate special... 874-04.
A.
No.
A and the vendor setup and the adjust the time.
That talks about the intersections being clear, the train tracks, things of that nature. But A, B, and C is the map. So take out A, B, C, take the map out, amend to 78 hours.
Then F talks about the stage, right?
Huh?
F talks about the stage.
No, I think they were fine about the stage. We talked about that. You have two options.
We weren't 110% fine with it. We figured that once we talked about the layout, we could talk about that, but...
Yeah, it's the intersection part.
Because our thing was that we thought we were discussing something else was putting it on second and main, but like more like past intersection, so we're not blocking the intersection right there by daycare so that way our vans will have easier access to pull their vehicles in and load and unload instead of pulling right off that main road.
And block the whole road?
So we wouldn't have vendors there on that?
No, I'm just curious. I'm just asking you don't... I mean, only if you throw your hands up. I'm just asking.
No, it wouldn't block the whole road. You'd still have the sides.
Okay. I don't know how wide your stage is. I was just curious.
I'm not sure either, off the top of my head, that was something we were wanting to talk about when we redid the layout. If it is too wide, then we'll leave it. That's why it wasn't like a super big deal, but it was something we wanted to talk about once we figured out the side portion issue.
See, personally, I think that whatever festival comes in, got to come out with layout, take it to the administration, fire chief, police chief, and everybody go work it out. It'd be ideal. It's me.
Well, like I said, and I know that you guys don't like this, but the administration and the fire chief and the police chief, we all got together and made what we felt was the safest layout, and that's not what they want, which is fine. And that's why we're coming to you to ask you, and it sounded like you guys would have a work session, to tell us what your thoughts are on how this thing needs to be laid out.
But you already have guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have guidelines.
Correct. It's down the middle. It's 72 hours. It's those things.
And you have, as we discussed at the last meeting, those guidelines are relayed to people. It's all very clear on that and who to contact.
There's maps. There's information, yes. And, you know, and another thing this legislation does is that it limits it to three, right? So, you know, with being a state route, it's tough to shut a state route down. So if somebody comes and they fill the application out and they want to...
Before the Rib Fest?
If they want to shut down, you know, twice a month for concerts, to shut down all of 56, you know, and they do everything right, is that what we want? Is 56 shut down twice a month all summer long for concerts? I mean, they can... People could do that now, is what I'm saying. This would regulate it to three. And if there's not legislation, then we're in the predicament of, well, you let them do it and shut the road down. You let them do it and shut the road down, but you won't let us do it and shut the road down. And that's where the legislation part also helps us.
Would the three festivals have first go so that someone can't come in and take our spot because they filled it out for us?
Yes. No. No, the discussion when Mr. Norman was on council with John Stahl, that it would be the Rib Fest and the Strawberry Festival, and then if another one would want to come in, you know, we would discuss it with them. But we would limit it to three because we don't want to shut down 56 all the time.
Whatever we do, we're only a little over three months away to the festival.
That's what... That's the point I was making.
Well, I'll make a motion to amend, to take out the vendor map, and that would be including 874.04, A, B, C. Is that correct?
Yes.
Plus extend the hours to 78 hours.
Is there a second? There's not a second? So what are...
Mr. President, I move that we remove section 874.04 in its entirety and amend the hours which fall under 874.02, section C to 78 hours.
If you eliminate 874, eliminate the hours.
That eliminates everything.
Yeah. What are council's wishes on this ordinance?
What did Mr. Hitt propose? Taking out A, B, or...
874.04, A, B, and C, which includes the vendor setup and removing the vendor setup map and then amending the hours to 78 hours.
I'm going to go ahead and second it.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniels?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
No.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
That's majority.
Yeah, majority. So it has been amended.
So if I'm clear, this eliminates the most of the problems that you have with this ordinance, with this change.
So that eliminates the special setup, correct?
Yes.
Where we...
The map, the map of where to do it or how you have to set it up and then it extended it to 78 hours.
The only thing that doesn't include is the stage, correct? Because they said that... You said that was F.
Well, you have the option of setting up either place by the track or... Well, I guess you'd have... You want to set up at a different spot than what the map specifies.
We were looking into it, yes.
But for now, it leaves the stage in place either at main and high.
But we can have the vendors on the curb.
No. So that's not what that means. So now, well, we'll let them finish.
So can someone explain what that means then?
So that means that it took it out. So right now, you don't have to do that. What the administration would like is guidance from city council. We talked about a work session. It sounded like most of them were like, okay, let's have a work session and how to set it up and show us a map, right? And then, and, yep.
So it's not set in stone where it's at? It's not...
It's not set in stone. Correct. Correct.
Section B said vendor setup on main shall be in the middle of the street with openings facing the downtown business storefronts. That's being eliminated with this amendment.
Is it because he just said it wasn't?
No, it is, but we... They're those set on where else to be. But my next question, though, is when will we have that set? Because like you said, we would like to start planning on how many vendors we can have, and we can't plan on where our vendors are going to be nor have until we have a set guideline of where they're going to be. Yeah.
I understand. I don't know if they have this...
I don't know if they have discussed having a work session or... I know at the last meeting, it was talked about and it sounded like they were in to do that. I really think, you know, this thing could get knocked out in a couple hours. It just takes a couple hours to sit down and talk about it and do it.
There was one, I believe, if I remember serves me correctly, there was one council member said something about doing the meeting. They were okay with it. I think before we go any further, I think we need to get a meeting set up and get this done. Getting close on time, and the sooner we get it knocked out, the better. I'm with the mayor. I think we sit down a couple hours, we can probably knock it out. I'll even provide the pizza.
Is this just a city council thing or is this going to be with representatives from festivals and the city people?
This will... It'll be on them of how they set it up if they want it to be a work session. It'll still be a public meeting. It'll be a public meeting when they have a work session. I believe it'll still have to be a public meeting due to the sunshine law. But, you know, input, how they'll do input, how they'll whatever will be up to them.
So I'm not understanding. If we're amending this to get rid of the map and extending the hours, why can they not submit an application saying they want to set along the curb?
Currently, currently, what we have in place is down the middle, right? And that's what it is going to defer to.
Based on what?
Based on what I just said 10 minutes ago.
On administrative authority?
What we came up with, what the administration and the safety services came up with and that's what it will defer to until we get other guidance.
So you're saying if they want to set up along the curb, when they turn in, the application will be denied?
Right now, yeah, until city council gives me guidance.
So it seems like the only guidance is that part of the application process would be to set up vendors where the board or with a committee would want to set it up and then you can approve it or not approve it.
As of right now, it's going to be denied anyway just because he keeps saying that as of right now, everything is in the center of the road. So it wouldn't matter if we put an application in asking to be on the curb or not.
Yeah, and that's why we're trying to work through this. That's why we're asking for guidance.
Something legislates that says that you have to...
I say that...
I mean, it's... I mean...
Hey, Pat.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I say that if council can agree on a work session date, let's do so now.
And leave this on for now?
No, I mean, no, I say a work session. We can go ahead and...
But leave this on until the work session's completed?
If you plan on having a work session before the next meeting.
I don't know when there's going to be a work session.
What about March 11?
With everything else?
Yeah, we've got three meetings that night.
I don't see one out. I mean, you got everybody there. That'd probably be the perfect opportunity.
You might have to do it after.
Right.
Because we have HRB at four. So if we're going to four, we can't do it before. Or you could do it before.
It is a busy day. I've been to meetings that...
Unless, I mean, like I said, the 11th to me would be the ideal because everybody would be here.
Everybody's here.
And that's one night that you'd have to...
Do you have to post that anywhere? Like paper?
Probably.
Because if you do, there's no paper before March 11.
If you take a date, I think we'll talk to Denver as long as it's put out publicly.
I'm just verifying.
I still don't understand. If we eliminate and take out section B, which says vendors set up on Main Street shall be in the middle of the street, if we eliminate that, I think it would leave it open for that discussion between the groups and the administration or whoever decides on this.
So right now, that's amended. So it's out. So...
Well, we haven't had a vote.
Yeah.
To amend.
To amend. It has been amended. Right, yes. So if you plan for...
You're right. I'm sorry.
A work session after that. On the 11th.
That's going to be a really longer day, too.
Because I know, you know, Pat sent out an email, I think twice, about council's going to do a work session. Right, and Brent, yeah. Brent responded.
Yeah. That's right.
But I didn't say it was on the 11th. Now you made it the 11th when I got two...
No, I'm just saying, I'm suggesting the 11th.
Yeah, that'd work fine.
I'm just suggesting. What's the last meeting? Six?
Midnight.
It could start as late as seven. If they're for an hour, but I'm expecting finance to start at 6:30.
It's probably two hours long.
Okay. So I would suggest either 12th or 13th. I mean, get the ball... I mean, nobody else has set a date?
12th?
Let's do March 12th at 6 o'clock in the evening.
Get a voice vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same song?
That'd work. That'd work. 6 would be fine. I'm...
So 6 o'clock, March 12th?
March 12th.
Where at?
Be here.
Be here.
In this room. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we got all the time.
If they figure out that map on the 12th and then have a meeting on the 20th and pass everything on the 20th, is that okay with you guys?
We have until the 20th.
Well, I mean, you're not telling me.
I'm just saying we have literally until the 20th, and then we have to start figuring out by the...
That is my question.
No.
Yeah, that's my question is that is, is the 20th too late? Is my question to get moving because I know your guys' festival's in jail. Okay.
So I would encourage, you know, the layout that you guys would like, if you can somehow be respectful for the businesses, maybe give them some room in between the... Yeah, that's... Yeah. I mean, if you can have something like that, you know, some space in between the booths so that... That'd be great. And we can go from there. So... Okay. So we'll leave 111 on. We'll go on to resolution 112-25. Can I get a motion read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 112-25, a resolution assessing the cost of the removal of high grass and weeds.
He wanted this one because of people's moving out, not paying for that and trying to get the money ahead of time and it'll soon be grass and weed time. And move to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt it.
Make a motion to adopt it.
Second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 112 dash 25 has passed. On for a second reading, resolution 113 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 113 to five, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to enter into a contract.
Okay, this has to do with transferring our dispatching, police dispatching to the county sheriff. I've got a few notes here. I'll just run over them real quick. This would be, would probably start maybe in July. It would be prorated this year. The cost for the next three years would not exceed 5% annually. And that would cover the costs due to personnel costs, equipment costs, supply costs and collective bargaining agreements. After 2027, there would be no cost to the city. It would be covered by the 911 tax levy. And this agreement can be terminated with a 180-day written notice by either party. And the savings here. A million 373,625,49. That's in a four, four and a half year period. The cost for the new dispatch system itself is 412,786 dollars. Then there's an annual maintenance fee on top of that of $25,000 per year. So you're talking 512,786 dollars. This is, I know there was a question brought up about the call that didn't go through. I don't know. I can't answer that. I, I, I seem to think maybe it may have been just a minute thing. I've had that happen. My, my phone, I'll call and nothing happens. I recall and it goes through. Could be just a matter of turning. I don't know. But this would save the money. This would save the city quite a bit of money. We're having a hard time hiring people. We've got three dispatchers as it is right now. This, the county's pretty much taking care of us. Eight hours at night and then every night of the week. And then I believe it's on Saturday, they're taking care of us also. So the two, three off, the three dispatchers that we have, they would get a shot at the county jobs if they wanted. And then I believe the chief said something about there might be two clerk positions come open with the police department. They could actually try for those if they wanted to. It would be their choice. So, but that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Councilman Hayes? Yes, sir. When we look at this, I see where you've highlighted for the remainder of the year, 61,500 for 26, 129, 150. And for 27, 135, 607 and no cost after that. However, the second line is, does that concern us? The cost for administrative staff at 114,400, is this our cost or not? And then 118,123 and 128,000. Are we going to have to pay for the cost of administrative staff also?
Go, I do not believe so, but I'm, I'm going to clarify before I say for sure.
Well, the chief's here. Maybe the chief can.
Would you come up and verify that?
I don't recall seeing these numbers before. That's why I asked. Cause if we're going to pay 130,000 for dispatch and 114,000 for administrative costs and with other things being 298,000 a year, that's not that much of a savings.
I don't know what you're talking about on the administrative costs and I don't.
It's the second line down in the second section, the bottom section.
Okay. Well, there's chief, you want to keep it?
Second line down on. The bottom section, cost for central dispatch and below that, cost for administrative staff. Is that what we're paying? That's our, that's the two clerks. That would, we would still be city employees. We talked about still requiring some clerks for the police department. That's what that cost is. Okay. And their pension, their Medicare and their health insurance? Yes, that's how Mr. Castle had it broken, broken down. Okay. So the total cost on the bottom for central dispatch and having two clerks at the police department is what that last line is. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Clarification.
Second reading. We'll keep this on?
Are you in any time for timeline, chief? You're okay? Okay. Yeah, let's just go ahead and leave it on.
Okay. Onto resolution 116 dash 25, can I get a motion read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 116 to five, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to sell or trade in property unneeded, obsolete or unfit for municipal purposes.
John G.
I was looking for my notes here. That was the one that had cars stuck to sell. They'd like to get rid of them.
Right. So police department has a number of vehicles that they would like to.
There's a 2015 Ford Fusion, a 2017 Ford pickup, a 2018 Ford pickup, a 2016 Ford utility, a 2016 Ford pickup, a 2014 Dodge Charger Cruiser.
I don't believe those are pickups, councilman. I believe those are peace, uh, police interceptor units.
Yes.
Cruisers, not the pickups. But yeah, just clarification. So we had this before us. Last time I had questions, my questions are answered. I would, I know there's not a, an emergency clause on this. However, I don't, I haven't heard any reason why we should keep this on. My move, we suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 116 dash 25 has passed. Onto resolution 117 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 117 to five, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to apply for a loan.
Uh, so this is related to applying for a loan for a new sanitation truck, not to exceed $400,000 to allow the safety service director to apply for a loan.
Any questions?
And well, at one point I believe we were a little bit worried because we were paying another loan. This would start the process. But we didn't need to be too hasty on this because with the readings, it would take it closer to the time where that loan was paid off. Do we still have thoughts on this, Mr. Castle?
But he's.
Oh, he's not.
Mr. Castle hasn't been here for an hour and a half.
I can't see you.
I think the trucks are supposed to be paid off in August, I believe.
August. Yes.
What he was looking at for purchase of the new truck.
Right.
But he wanted to try to get the loan now.
So what our plan was is that we would start looking, well, we've already started looking, but be able to get it. And then, you know, how we would set it up is that we would not start the loan payment until August, when the other loans fell off.
And this would be a smaller truck to allow access to like side streets or alleyways or.
Yes, to the smaller areas in London. Yes.
That the bigger trucks have a hard time getting into.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Do we have a need to leave this on?
One and two.
It's up to you.
I'm good, I'm good either way. I just, I thought if there was the possibility that they wanted to get this started because they found a truck, I didn't want to delay that anymore.
I mean, the quicker it's, you know, if you guys want to do it and that's line it up with August, you know.
So make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yep.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Resolution 117 dash 25 has passed. Onto resolution 118 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 118 to five, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to purchase a sanitation truck through the joint purchasing program or advertising for bids and entering into a contract.
So this applies to the same thing, the sanitation truck. This just allows the safety service director to purchase that through the joint purchasing program or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract. Not to exceed $400,000.
Well, we suspended the last one. I'll move that we suspend the rules on this.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes. Moved it out.
Second.
Ms., Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes, sir.
Resolution 118 dash 25 has passed. Onto new business ordinance 119 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 119 to five and ordinance amending 881 of the codified ordinances.
Yeah, as you know, I brought to the finance committee in February, trying to bring back the half a percent income tax credit for the people who live in London but work outside of London. And it was unsuccessful. So this meeting, I was going to bring back new legislation for a 0.25% credit for people who live in London and work in other cities. And Monday, the law director emailed me. This, I guess it's going to make it a little smoother process, just amending 881 for that. So, which I mean, think it means it doesn't have to go back to a finance committee, right? Cause it's not new legislation. It's just an amendment.
Well, we can move to send it back to committee if we want to, but.
Right. It could be moved back.
Yeah.
Can be, can be left on also since it's just an amendment.
I'd like to thank the law director also because this is what working together and compromises look, look like. So.
Was there any input, you know, from anybody else other than the law director?
As far as.
Did she reach out to anyone?
Oh, I have no idea. Josh.
I mean, just nothing about the financial.
Oh, okay. But I thought that since it was just an amendment, it doesn't have to go back to finance committee, I wouldn't think, since it's not in the legislation.
I hope so that it gets discussed in the next finance. For numbers to be shown and stuff.
Well, it was, it was discussed in finance and some of the concerns were all of the financial obligations that the city has coming up as far as the debt services for a new police station, the trash truck, the increase in pay for the police department, the, I can't remember what else, but there's a variety of things that this city has financial obligations to. So the concern was that this would cut into those revenues quite a bit.
Well, that was the, uh, the old one.
I think it was $830,000. Is that correct? And then with new houses coming in, it would, uh, that would add to that loss as well.
And she also talked to the Amy in the tax department. And the numbers you're talking were that was the original that I tried to bring through finance. This is for 0.25, which is half of that.
Right. I understand that.
Any other questions on this one?
I want to suspend the three reading rules on it. I said unless you want to suspend the three reading rules on this too.
I'll make a motion. This has been the three reading.
We're on a roll here, right?
Is there a second?
I'm sure there's one.
Second, but I want to stay on. Onto resolution 120 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 122 to five, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So since councilman, councilwoman trainer's not here, this is so that we can accept the grant for $5,025,000 issued to us by the federal government. This was discussed. Listen, this free money's sitting out there. It's, we just need to say, we'll take it, right? Let's accept it. There is an emergency measure on this. If we would like to do that, this has been long enough. We've talked about this. We beat it to death. We've been waiting on the money. I hereby move that we suspend the three reading rule for this piece of legislation.
I second it.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
A second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Resolution 120 dash 25 has passed. Onto resolution 121 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Resolution 121 to 25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Again, since councilwoman trainer's not here, uh, $5,025,000 is not enough to build our police department. We know it's about $9 million. There is a bond that will be issued or has been issued. We just need to increase the appropriations so that we can spend this on the police department too. Therefore move that we suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Moved it out.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Resolution 121 dash 25 has passed. Onto resolution 122 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 122 to 25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, this is where things take a little bit of a turn. This also applies to the bond. There is some bond service that we're going to have to pay. This is actually, I believe, the first $109,484, or $484 is to pay the bonding company. This is their fee. Is that correct? Okay. So this is part of the deal that we do have to pay them to do that work for us. $109,484.88. This is also an emergency. I move that we suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Moved it out.
Second.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Resolution 122 dash 25 has passed. Onto resolution 123 dash 25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 123 to 25, a resolution authorizing the auditor to increase appropriations and transfer funds.
So not only do we get money, but we're just going to have to start paying it back. So this is going to appropriate money out of our general fund? Yep. So that we can start to pay this back this year. And whenever you take a loan, you got to start to pay it back. We don't get a whole free year. I wish we did. So we do have to pay them back. I move that we suspend the three reading rules so we can set that up also.
Second.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Eads?
Yep.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hit?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Moved it out.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Resolution 123-25 has passed.
Congratulations to the police chief and everybody that worked so hard on this. This is going to get it moving.
Okay, onto Resolution 124-25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 124-25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, this is supposed to be sponsored by me, and I don't know if I can remember this, but from what I understand, Stanley Electric had more employees than what we expected, so there's an abatement that goes back out, but we didn't appropriate enough money to do that based on the employees. So this is an abatement to the general fund, or we are reimbursing the general fund at this point?
Yes, I already, we've already paid it out of the general funds to the schools, so, because it was just a significant reason I was asking to reverse that.
Okay, so we're basically paying ourselves back for money we've already spent in the amount of $9,465.97. There is no emergency on this, and I feel like I've asked for too many suspensions already.
Well, we've got, what, $9,465? We could use that, couldn't we?
Okay, I'll make the motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
No, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Resolution 124-25 has passed. Onto Resolution 125-25.
So moved.
To read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 125-25, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So it's the same thing, except that we have to pay ourselves because we've paid this out on the fire portion, the half percent also. Is that correct? Very good.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yep.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Moved it out.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 125-25 has passed. Onto Resolution 126-25, can I get a motion to read by title number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution 126-25, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for four pickleball courts.
So we discussed this last year, and the main opposition to it was the location. So we had discussed locating this at South Walnut Street location, four courts. The cost, I believe, was, oh, north, North Walnut, sorry. By the skateboard park and the basketball court. So this is to allow the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids for that. And I believe that included-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe that included lighting-
No.
Electric security, just the, just the pickleball court.
I believe this was just for the pickleball courts, and we were going to have to get further information about lighting and extending a parking lot, is that correct?
I believe this was to move toward getting a portal of those things.
Yeah, this is just- So it doesn't let us, I don't believe it lets us accept it, right?
Right, no.
Right, just, just for, so we're asked to get out and get some numbers so we get a-
Yeah, so we know what it's pricing at.
Yeah.
Portal.
We're on kind of a time thing here, aren't we?
It'll be seven degrees next week.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, I believe you said the sooner it would be better, as far as getting things moving.
Yeah.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on this.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Mr. Eads?
Yep.
Okay, Resolution 126-25, we'll stay on. Onto round table. John?
I don't have anything.
Andy?
The next Public Service Committee meeting is at six o'clock on March, or five o'clock on March 11th, and then Finance will follow Safety Service Committee meeting, which could be 6:30, 7:00, depending on how long Safety Committee meeting takes, in the meeting room next door.
Rich?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. I know it's been a long night, I'm really starting to get tired, but we got it done in, by nine, 9:05, we're doing okay. Congratulations, Lisa. Glad to have you aboard. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, being involved. It just, it seems like it makes it go by a little easier when you're involved. Sometimes just questions come up, we have to stop and take time, and, you know, we want to do it right. So I thank you all. I want to thank all of our employees of the city. Job's well done. I want to thank all my council members, been a long evening. Great job, guys, I appreciate you all, I love you all. Safety meeting will be six o'clock on Tuesday evening, the 11th, in the conference room. And we will get together on the 12th at six o'clock to have the meeting about the other thing, I can't even think of what, it's right on, Strawberry Festival thing, okay. That's all I got, thank you all.
Brent? Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and definitely give a special thanks to the London Fire and EMS. I was across the street watching that when that happened, and they were nothing but professional. And, well Greg, so, so does that legislation, the amendment, does that have to go back to Finance? Or it doesn't, it just comes on for a second reading? Okay. I was just wondering if it's mandatory?
It can be discussed, but at this point, it's still left on here, correct?
Okay.
We did not move to take it back.
Right.
Okay.
Well, Greg, it looks like I'll be bugging you in another next meeting.
All right, make another long meeting.
That's all I got. That's all I got, I'm hungry.
Thank you for everyone that came out. It's a long meeting. I think, I think we've moved in the right direction regardless of a lot of things.[1665.41]